If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Joining us, as always throughout the summer, are our cadets from the NJROTC. So we want to welcome them as they present the colors.
Freeze and colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry colors. Ready, cut, pose, march. Colors, up. Freeze and arms. Post the colors. Ready, two. Carry colors. Ready, cut. Up, out, face. Forward, march.
Color guard.
Mark time.
Color guard. Forward, up.
Right, left, right, pace.
Ladies and gentlemen, please. Cadets, turn, prepare. Beverly. Thank you, Bernie. What I wanted to tell you and tell them in front of the board is that I am extremely proud of them this year, this summer, Major Bernie and I. Not only have they done all the color work, but they've also helped myself and Major Bernie move the entire NJROTC unit from Garfield over to Mellett. I don't know what I'd do without them. They were just instrumental in that. So, Harris' involvement was fantastic. Ms. Harris' mom, she's dead since she is, when she finished up, September?
September 16th.
September, a degree in psychology and a single mom, working for 3.7. It did outstanding.
On behalf of the board, we want to extend our thanks to you. You guys do a fantastic job. You've been here at every meeting this summer. We appreciate what you do, not only for presenting the colors and helping us kick off every board meeting, but also for all the things that you've reported out that you guys do during the summer. I think you're well on your way to being successful, and I hope that NJROTC has played a part in that at Akron Public Schools as well. So, thank you very much for everything. We appreciate it. Great. With that, community and school reflections. Would anyone like to start?
I'll start. Several of us had an opportunity to be at the Harris-Jackson opening this past Saturday. It was very nice to be there, to see the parents, see the teachers, all the staff, the kids who were excited, and some coming in the door saying, wow, we're walking into a mansion. And it was very nice to see the people there, the mayor and president of city council as well. But I was so excited because just looking at the building and just watching the kids, I mean, I get really excited seeing the kids so happy. But there were not just the kids, but a lot of the parents. And I can't remember Mary's last name, but she is one of the mature women who was on the committee to start all of this, and she stayed on it everywhere, every step of the way, and she was there, so I was able to see her. It was really nice to see her because she stayed on Mr. James and everyone else about Harrison Jackson Elementary School. So it was very, very nice to be there. And then also, a couple of us went to the Urban League 92nd Annual Gala. It was a very nice event. A lot of individuals who were there, in the community, who enjoyed the program. Diane Dawson Miller from the City of Akron was one of the young ladies that was put into kind of their, I guess it's the Hall of Fame, yeah, their Hall of Fame. But the highlight for me was one of our students from Helen Arnold, Jordan Turner. He spoke that night, and he did a good job. It was nice to see how well he did. And his mother was there to support him throughout the program, which goes along with Mississippi piece of parent participation, which is what the Urban League stated they wanted out of this program for their kids. And the program is STEAM, and it stood for science, technology, engineer, art, and math. And these kids went for seven weeks, three days, for three hours, to learn through some hands-on experience. And I thought it was really nice that they had these kids involved. And they wanted to improve the kids' academic area by one grade level. I didn't really get the statistics on that, but I do know that they increased the students' math by 61%. So they made an increase, those students who participated. And it was just a pilot program, who participated. But they're going to open it up, I believe, this coming year, this coming summer, for more individuals. I thought this was a part, maybe some of the Akron Public Schools students who may have not been involved, whether it be LeBron James or mentoring program or somewhere else. Maybe we can put some of those kids into that program to help them as well. So we're making sure that all kids can get some help whenever they need. This sounds like it's a good program. And if anyone is interested in being a part of it, contact the Urban League, and they will direct you to the correct individuals to do that. And they also accept donations, because there are scholarships that they give to the kids as well. Those are two events that I thought was really nice, and I enjoyed, especially seeing Jordan up there and our kids Saturday. I had a good weekend. Thank you.
I'll go, and I apologize because my whole written-out list of where I went is sitting on my desk. I did it, and I thought I put it in my bag, but I didn't. I know right where it is. To start off, I had the, Lisa and I both attended the access breakfast, which was just awesome to see all the things they do, and it was amazing. They actually had a visual of how many meals they served, and how many pillows and everything they had. It was just, it was eye-opening and awesome. So it was a great event. And then I also attended the Summit for Kids Breakfast, which was excellent. And as Bruce said, the women who saw the Urban League's 92nd Annual Gala, but for the Women in STEAM Leadership Academy induction. So they are working on injecting women into this STEAM honorary. And then the next day, I went to the Summit for Kids, where we had all of our goodies that were passed out. And Carla and her group, again, as always, did a wonderful job. Superintendent James was there, Gilby was there. It was a great event. Kids were streaming in. And I liked what we did, is we really tried to key in on one of the things that even board members could go to and learn from, but take control of your money and your life. I think we can always learn from a class like that, but I think that was a good thing for them to decide to try and push for the parents. The kids were getting things, but this was a good class and let them know that we are offering these types of events to them. I likewise attended the opening of Harris-Jackson. And I just want to say that the kids were so excited about it, and it was so exciting to see the library and the mute. The art room was fabulous, and just the patio out there where they could have outdoor learning. We incorporated a lot of great things into this building, and so I think that these kids are going to be very lucky. Very nice event. And last but not least, I did go to the LeBron James Family Foundation at Cedar Point, so I have my lovely lace from the event. But that was just fabulous. To see these kids and to see them with their family, and they were so, not only were they appreciative, but they were having so much fun, and it was just, I think for a lot of these kids, it was an opportunity of a lifetime for them, and it really was just a fabulous event. They did a great job. And thank you to Denver and all of her staff for getting all the coordination of getting all those people out there and through all the lines, and then fed, and everything else. So it was just an awesome day. And let me say that even a really old board member can still ride a roller coaster. And I, oh, and one other thing in terms of the I Promise. I did go to the I Promise to kickoff event, and it was an overflowing room. I mean, it was full. I mean, granted, it was parents and kids, but it looks like they could have quite a large group based on the success of the first one. So they really, it was overflowing, and it was a very nice event. A busy, a busy two weeks.
I just want to, a quick shout-out to the Kenmore-Garfield football team. I went to the game on Saturday. Not the score anybody wanted, but we fielded a full team of young men. I didn't see anybody give up on the field. I had a lot of nice compliments about Coach Boyd and what he's done with those young men, young students, over the course of the summer. And I wanted to say thank you to our maintenance department for getting out there, working on the track, working on the field, working on the fieldhouses and bleachers and everything. So we put our first best foot forward. We played Coventry. And talking to somebody from Coventry, I think at least the coach I talked to, first time he had been involved in a game against Kenmore-Garfield, or Kenmore for that matter, you know, to start the neighbors, if you will. So it was a good start to the football season. Once again, not the score anybody would want, but I didn't see anybody give up on anything. We did, I did read a proclamation, and we have it here. It will be put in permanent minutes of this board meeting for the benefit of Coach Boyd and Principal Colain on what they've done, along with the students, the community, the other coaches on the football team, the other staff in the high school, everything they've done leading up to what I hope and everybody hopes will be a wonderful, successful start to a new tradition at Kenmore-Garfield.
Just following up on a few things. In addition to the Summit for Kids Breakfast, there was a symposium also that day that I had the fortune of attending on the opiate epidemic. Don't want to ignore the impact that has not just on our county and our city, but our schools. So I know that's been a topic of conversation around this table already, that we don't ignore it, but it was just, it was more eye-opening and somewhat hopeful. So really hoping that some of the folks that spoke had ideas of where things were going to go. And we did get to hear from Representative Amelia Sykes, who spoke about what's happening in the State House and what the latest updates are there. So that was good to hear. The Garfield, or Kenmore-Garfield prayer service, Reverend Walker and I both got to attend, and that was organized by the Kenmore Pastors Alliance, I believe is what it was, or Church Alliance. And they had pastors from both the Firestone Park and Kenmore area who led prayers for the community, and for our staff, and for the students. And basically, that those would all be forces that would come together, and that there would be perhaps a spiritual way that that might happen as well. The football team was mentioned, and so that was good. And I know there was another gathering, I believe that it was the next day that they talked about. And it was held at the Catholic church that's right across the street from the school, and they're very anxious for a good year. And so that was wonderful to have their support. I wanted to give a shout-out to students I got to see from several of our schools over the summer. I did get to see Pippin at Rubber City Theater and The Little Mermaid at Wetherveen Playhouse, both of which had several students from Akron Public Schools, and it was great to see them represented. And then, on a sadder note, I wanted to mention, I went to the calling hours for Mike Marshall, who is the husband to Lisa Marshall, who is the Urban Outreach Coordinator for the chapel to Akron, to the urban community, but in particular to Leggett. And I can say that there was a good turnout for volunteers, and I was there early, so I'm sure that some of the staff got over there after I'd been there. I was in line right at 4 o'clock when it was supposed to start, and we were already out the door at the chapel. So there was a wonderful turnout for him. He was only 52 years old, and so it was a great loss and quite a shock to his family. So our thoughts and prayers are with Lisa and her son, who I know it was his first day of college today. So our thoughts as a district are with them, and we're very grateful. I know Mike volunteered over there as well, and for the work that Lisa will continue to do at Leggett.
Just wanted to follow up on the faith community prayer breakfast, and they were very excited, very intentional in their prayers for staff, students, football, administration, praying that there will be a very smooth transition, and that they were all willing to make sure that that would happen. And they gave personal testimonies of their relationship in Garfield, and what it meant to them, those who gave remarks, or their relationship in Kenmore, and what it meant to them, and what they heard about each other's communities. But that was not going to stop them from joining together and supporting Kenmore-Garfield and its reconfiguration. And so we're hoping that that would be an impetus for parents, students, to continue the excitement that even the football team had. And though, again, that was not the result as far as the school board, but the teamwork that has led up to that, all of the PR that we've seen, all the things that the coach has done, the staff, those young men are ready to be one school. And I understand the next night, they were to look at the movie, The Titans, and to glean from what that movie and that real-life experience meant to those students as well.
I've forgotten a brief segue for me, because there's something else I wanted to say about the Kenmore-Garfield football team. This coming weekend is Kenmore Better Block, and it starts at 6 o'clock Friday on Kenmore Boulevard. And the organizers of Better Block are organizing the people from Firestone Park and from Kenmore, and from anybody else who cares to show up to line the boulevard around 5:30, I believe it is, as the football team goes down the boulevard to send them off to the next game in a positive manner with both communities coming together. So if anybody cares to get out and cheer for those players and the coaches and the communities that are coming together there, it would be wonderful for you to head straight to Kenmore at 5:30.
Anyone else? Hearing nothing. We have no requests to address the board and no recognitions this evening, so we will move forward with the approval of the meeting minutes, the regular meeting minutes from August 14, 2017, as well as the special meeting minutes from Saturday, August 26, 2017. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions on the minutes? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Rodder?
Yep.
All right, superintendent's recommendation.
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 53 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the personnel recommendations. Any discussion or questions?
I just wanted to say, we always appreciate all of our retirees, those that have given so much to the district. We've got several on here. Folks that have obviously planned ahead well, they're declaring for the end of the school year, they've got a plan. And I just wanted to particularly mention Linda Ward. She has been a lovely supporter of the arts, and she's made an impact on quite a few students.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes, abstaining on item 53.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, abstaining from item number 1112.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes, abstaining from item 51.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes, abstaining from item 52.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration one motion and six resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, abstaining from item number one.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
And, Mr. President, I believe I'm pointing out that the three gifts on the table, the fresh peaches, are related to item number seven, I assume. And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 30 business affairs recommendations and one item on the business affairs supplement. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the business affairs recommendations. Any questions or discussion?
I just, on items 16 and 17, I'd just like to point that out to everybody and thank both of those groups for what they are doing for us, basically at no cost.
I have a question, a comment on item number nine. I'm glad that that's a, we have that with Ray Horner in his corner, because that is part of marketing our district, that's another part. The more that we market, the more that we get out to the community, to everyone, the better, the more it shows that what we are doing here in the school district, or what the students are doing to make our school district the way that it is. And then, on item number 15, I had a question as to how many of the participants in this program were African-American, and how many actually had participated. I may have been African-American since, I guess you may not have this, for the past seven years.
We actually had a request earlier today at our scrimmage to have a list of the participants, so we'll put together a report for you with our message call work program.
My last comment is, I know we talked about, it's a lot about busing and so forth, but I want to give a shout-out to Bill Ann Dexter, because he has come in, he's taken our transportation department to another level, and I like all the work that he's doing, and he's a hard worker. So I wanted to thank him as well, because I look at all the things that go on with busing. As a kid, I cleaned those buses, various buses like that for Akron Public Schools, but he's done a very good job of doing the work of our transportation system. Thank you.
We don't have a breakdown on minority numbers?
Not tonight, and he asked for seven year update as well. I'll put together.
We should have that on every personnel hiring. More than five or six people. We always do have to seek out.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, superintendent's report.
Okay.
Sorry, let's load on mic.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yeah.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
All right, superintendent's.
The only thing I have to report is that, again, on the same day that we had Summit for Kids, August 19, later on that day, there was the Bhutanese Community Association of Akron Festival, and so Akron Public Schools was recognized at that ceremony. In addition, University of Akron has established several scholarships for the Bhutanese community. One scholarship will be $5,000, that's awarded to one student, two $2,500 scholarships, and I want to say three or four $1,000 scholarships that they will start at the, at next academic year for graduates of Akron Public Schools who are from that community.
Thank you.
And that's it.
All right, for president's report, I just want to welcome everyone back to the start of another new school year. We're really excited about all of the great things taking place in the district right now. And for those of you that have been paying attention to what the board and its staff have been doing over the summer, there has been a lot going on. There are a lot of good things happening in Akron Public Schools right now. So I want to say welcome. I want to encourage people to drive carefully, to watch out for students and buses as we head back this week. And really, we're thankful to everything that staff has done over the summer to really keep this district going and build momentum heading into this year and the next couple of years. As Tim mentioned earlier, we did the Kenmore-Garfield resolution, and I just want to say, you know, I want to wish the faculty and the staff and the students and the parents of both the school and both of those communities the best of luck as they start together this year. It's been really inspiring for me to watch them come together, and I know we talk a lot about the football team in particular, but they really have been, along with Principal Colain and his efforts at getting people even through Garfield as they exit that building and head into Kenmore. Coach Boyd and his coaching staff and the students have been the most visible example of two neighborhoods really coming together and doing the work that it takes to bring those different cultures together, to function as one school, as one team, as one neighborhood. And Coach Boyd really deserves a lot of credit for the work that he's done. He has sent us pictures from the retreat that they did, from the service projects that they've done out in the community, participating in the Remember the Titans event, which Reverend Walker mentioned earlier, which is a movie about the adversity and the differences that one community faces and how they come to work together as a team. And so that event was done as a showing, several clips of the movie, and it was meant to be a community conversation, really more for the community, for the students to witness, the community talking about what those clips... to witness, the community talking about what those clips mean and how it relates. And I got to give a shout out to Carla who was there and worked through technical difficulties and everything else to get that, uh, to get that program going, but it, it was again another opportunity. Um, some of the things that we've gone to have, have been less attended than, than the meetings leading up to the decision last year, um, but we've provided, I think, no shortage of opportunities, and we've really empowered, I think, the teachers and the staff, um, to sort of chart the course for that, for Kenmore-Garfield. So, uh, want to wish them luck. Um, someone, uh, a couple of people mentioned that we went to Harris-Jackson. I always think it's phenomenal when, uh, especially in that area of the city, and I know Lisa has a special connection with Harris, I think you, you went there, your husband went there, your grandmother went there, so lots of history. Again, more communities or more neighborhoods with that as Harris and Jackson merging into one school. And just the fact that when we talk about, I think it was, uh, Ms. Deng Wen that pointed out that, you know, a lot, some people spend a lot of money to give their kids the kind of cultural experiences that we have just by enrolling in one of our schools. Forty-three languages spoken in Akron Public Schools is just phenomenal, so wish them the best of luck in their new building, uh, under Principal Aller. Uh, and we also, of course, continue to look at ways, um, to consolidate our footprint and, and to make sure that we're being efficient, and so I'm sure that we will have, uh, as, you know, over the next several years, we'll see more consolidations and mergers to some degree, uh, of one type or another as we continue to be, uh, fiscally responsible. Uh, Tim and I had the opportunity to participate in a neighborhood congress. I believe that group, it functions under a grant, um, that was provided by the Knight Foundation, that, uh, leaders from each of Akron's twenty-four neighborhoods, community neighborhood leaders, I should say, neighborhood champions come together in sort of a neighborhood congress. And Tim and I were invited, uh, to speak on behalf of Akron Public Schools, really a discussion style like this around a table where we talked about, uh, the opportunities that we have and the challenges that we have and, and answered a lot of, a lot of good questions. Really, a lot of good discussion came out of that, and so always a treat. Participated in the West Akron Parade and Festival to Remember the Titans at Kenmore-Garfield. Uh, just a reminder for folks that have not had a chance to participate in the College and Career Academy's, uh, public information meetings out in the community, there's another one coming up on September seventh from six to seven P.M. at STEM High School. The all-call went out today as well, I got that, so we're good there. Um, I think this is the last one before you guys probably bring something, start bringing stuff back to us about how the other ones went, correct? So, if someone, uh, if, if, if anyone's listening out in the interwebs and hasn't had a chance to, to participate in one of those and ask questions, um, that would be a good meeting to go to. And, uh, the, next to the last thing I want to mention is recently there was an editorial in the paper, paper about poverty and education and its impact on learning. And if you've been paying attention over the summer, there have been no shortage of mentions for Akron Public Schools, usually buried within another editorial about something else, about something going on in Akron, something from a community development perspective or an economic development perspective, and certainly this one was, uh, you know, didn't mention Akron Public Schools, but it was about the impact of poverty on education. And I think that so many of the things that we do, you know, I hope people recognize all of the efforts that are made here at Akron Public Schools to address the challenges of the kids that come into our buildings, um, that are at risk from homelessness and hunger and abuse and neglect and so many other things that they face at home and then come into our building, um, whether it's the Fresh Fruits and Vegetables program tonight, whether it's, uh, and it was mentioned, item seventeen under Business Affairs, the free primary health care as a pilot for students at Helen Arnold. I mean, there are big things going on in Akron Public Schools that we are doing to also address and mitigate the factors that, you know, the, the challenges that kids bring into our building. And so I hope that those, um, those go noticed. And the last thing I want to mention, for those of us that have friends and family in the Houston and Corpus Christi and Texas area, our thoughts and prayers and well wishes go out to everyone, uh, there, um, that's experiencing that, so. Anything else? That was a lot from me.
Okay. Treasurer's report.
As President Bravo mentioned, there is a lot going on. There's a lot going on for the finance office. We've started our fiscal seventeen audit, so Finance Committee and Board, you should be getting a pre-audit engagement letter summarizing the audit terms and cycle and process. I think the audit fee will come in just under fifty thousand dollars this year. Hopefully done before March, so you can, uh, get a sense of how long they're on-site and how intense it is. Uh, H.R. and payroll staff, we've got to give a shout out to them, and there's some folks have come in this weekend to put to rest end-of-year, last-year contracts, create new contracts, make sure the system's up and running, pull force for our staff returning. So a good shout out to H.R. and payroll staff, we're putting in a lot of extra hours here recently. I'm pleased to report, I had a couple of questions on the monthly finance report, so I was excited to see that somebody picked it up and said there's a little bit more red on it than we're used to. So I think the goal for the finance report this year is, if you could take a look at page four, and as we look at this report month to month, page four is going to be the best one-page summary that we can about where we're at with our current finances. And if you remember last year at this time for fiscal seventeen, we were staring into about a one-point-five million dollar deficit. And internally in Finance Committee and at the board level, we said, what is it going to take for us to balance the budget? And as President Bravo mentioned, a lot of work was done this last year to balance that budget. And I think we're going to head into fiscal or the seventeen, eighteen school year with the same goal, back where we balance the budget and cover that one-point-seven million dollar deficit. Now, that's not cash on hand, you all know that by now, that cash on hand extends out for an extended period of time, but it is representative of the trend, and you see how that trend grows. So let's keep a, keep an eye on that together, and I'll be keeping some notes at the bottom of page four. Along with our keeping an eye on finances, Finance Committee has studied, um, an employer-owned healthcare model for well over a year now, and I know Finance Committee's going to talk a little bit more about this. And we're now at a point to push forward with this after a lot of due diligence. The company's name is Palladina. It is a primary care delivery model that we contract directly and serve our employees directly. This is an add, it's not an or. So we engage Palladina to hire docs, set up shop in the local area, and their primary goal is to improve the health and wellness of about seven thousand different, I think seven thousand belly buttons on our health insurance plan. To put in perspective about the kind of, uh, investment and the return on investment that we're looking for in this kind of model is, uh, our annual general fund budget is three-hundred-and-fifty million. Total annually in benefits, we spend about fifty million, and a large portion, if not forty million dollars of that is health insurance. So we're really, uh, energized about this model, about bringing, uh, doctors in to serve just our employees in a way that's, um, available for them when they need it to be available to them. So, we don't have the sites located yet, uh, but one will be in Akron, one may be in Fairlon. Uh, we're looking at about a seventeen to twenty percent return on our investment, and you can calculate on forty to forty-two million dollars, that's a pretty big bang for our buck. And again, I just want to stress that the, the primary goal of Palladina in this model that we've been studying is to improve the health and wellness of our employees. The finances is secondary. It really is secondary because if we're doing it right by improving health and wellness and even the wellness factor that we've been engaging, uh, other companies for, the dollars will follow. And it, and it does provide our employees a cost-free way, um, a very confidential and private way to address their healthcare concerns without going through a larger, um, billing, remittance, very long-term project, sometimes it is. The one thing that we are engaging our community partners with and the providers is, again, this is an and, this is not an or, so if, once the employees enrolled in this program, they will not be removed from their current, um, medical provider, their home doctor. It is a way to enhance the offerings. It is of no cost to the employees themselves. There's no office does it co-pay, so we're very dedicated to making this work, work for our employees. And I know I've got, uh, some frequently asked questions here, uh, to reference maybe for future press releases, um, and when we go to engage in a contract likely in October. Yes, sir.
When, uh, Palladina, is, is this office, this corporate office, is it only going to be servicing the Akron School or is it going to be servicing other school districts?
Um, right now, we're the only school district that is engaged to talk to them. There are other county agencies and other businesses. The way their model works, um, and right now, we're, we're planning on two office locations. One office location will see, see only Palladina members, so it could see an Akron Public Schools employee, and it could also see another employer that's contracted with Palladina. The other location will be exclusive to Akron Public School employees.
You, you had mentioned that it might be, uh, Fairlon or somewhere else. Well, why wouldn't we make it mandated that that be in Akron, in the city of Akron, that office, that particular office?
Uh, we, we are. We're currently in negotiating their contract and, um, one of those locations will be in the city.
Yeah, when you presented though, you didn't emphasize at that, that point, so that will be the case?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question? That is the report. All right, committee reports, legal contracts and board policy.
Yes, uh, we have present for the second reading, but we're going to request the waiver of a third reading, uh, in a request for approval. We have revised policy twenty-six, twenty-three point oh-two, which is third-grade reading guarantee, revised policy fifty-two-hundred, which is attendance, and revised policy fifty-four sixty graduation requirements. And I wanted, before we vote, I wanted to just bring out a ax to these policies, two policies, well, revised policy, third-grade reading guarantee, be sent out to all of you so you can read it, and if there's any questions, because in the last paragraph of there, it's an addition other than what the original policy had. And for the, uh, graduation, uh, requirements, I was, it was also the last, uh, little section there, uh, we're going to ask Mrs., I'm sorry, Mrs. William Woods to, uh, actually go over that, but she is going to have, at our next meeting, they're going to have information on this, so I, I will not go into it, but, uh, these, these policies, we'd actually, we waive the third, all three, waive the third reading.
Thank you, and thanks for sending that out with the comments ahead of time. Uh, we have a request to waive the, uh, three readings. Do I have a motion on that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the third reading requirement. Any questions on that? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Rodman?
This is, um, waiving?
Waiving the third reading requirement?
Yes.
We're still have an opportunity to ask questions after we waive it?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
And do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Yes, the, uh, what, uh, I, I don't know, I look at, uh, the, the scores and just, they all seem to be, you know, I'm not looking at every school, I'm not going to sit down and look at every third grader, class in the state of Ohio, but, uh, I don't know, it just seems to be that it's, uh, either they've set the bar too high or it's, or we're, we're too low. I, I don't know, I'm not saying that our kids are doing badly, I'm, I'm asking, are the bars set too high?
I, I think it's, it's not set too high, but one of the things I'm going to defer if I can to Mrs. Rodman, uh, because, uh, that was something that we have also, and I think you guys received a copy of, uh, this third-grade guarantee outline, it should have probably came, came with that, and, uh, it, it, it's trying to give our students another opportunity to, uh, pass that third-grade reading, to concentrate on those students who have not passed it, to get them in for another, uh, time to, to, to concentrate on, on this testing again, and give them a third time before they take the final test, am I correct?
They took the final test this summer, we gave them, excuse me, during our third-grade reading academy, all of our students who attended, there were the hundred-and-twenty-one who needed additional intervention at the conclusion of the school year. And during the, uh, testing window that the state has, our students took both the math assessment and also the state reading assessment. We received the results back today, so we went to, uh, we started this summer with a hundred-and-twenty-one students and we are down to eighteen. Of course, we want a hundred percent of our students to advance to fourth grade, but I think going down to eighteen shows the efforts that our staff would put forward to ensure our students were successful.
And this new policy and the new requirements also allow, I think we've talked about, that rather than waiting until mid-year or later to advance those students, if, if they come in this fall and can, and can be worked with and tested again, we can move them anytime that they meet those requirements, right?
Correct. This summer, ODE provided some additional guidance, empowering the districts to create policy around making decisions on an individual student, high-student basis, and so that's what this policy is, asking us to accept that and to, for us to look at these fourteen students twice. So this fall, we'll look at them and then again, we'll give the assessment in December. And it's not just math, it allows us to use a variety of different assessments that save the student grade to advance to fourth grade.
So it gives, I mean, it's just to the advantage of our students because sometimes you can kind of lose, they don't, you know, we get them behind early on and then they start getting further and further behind. We're kind of contributing to that dropout rate or to the school and prison pipeline, so we're trying to cut that off. I think this helps, uh, in, with our kids so they can get what they need to move forward. So I, I, I mean, I just, I like it because anything that's going to help the students, I'm, I'm, I'm in, in with it, and I think this is going to give our students, uh, another helping hand to move forward and what they're, what we need to do, and I think, uh, the school is, district is doing what we're supposed to do by allowing this to happen.
Mrs. Ali, I've heard nothing but good things about the work that you do, and I just want to pass that on to you. Uh, as much as you'd love to have a hundred percent, you rarely in any endeavor get a hundred percent. You don't get a hundred percent employment because there are certain people that just don't want to work, that's why you're never going to get, I learned that in, I think, macro or microeconomics, uh, forty-some years ago, but, uh, the, um, what, what are, what is our, I, I, I'm not talking about the grades you just got today because you have probably had an opportunity to go over them, but what are we looking at, you know, just, just going back, uh, semester as far as an overall grade for third graders?
An overall grade?
Yeah.
On the state report card, we earned a C for our K-three literacy efforts, which is an improvement from last year.
You are doing, I-
It's a team effort.
I mean, you, you are, but I have heard great things about the work that you do.
First of all, there's a question.
I wanted to just go over that number again. One hundred and twenty-two or one twenty-one?
One hundred and twenty-one.
And we only have fourteen.
There are currently eighteen.
Eighteen students.
Yes, that will have to be fixed if they start missing the policy.
So I just wanted us to see what a great difference that we made during the summer to bring our students, and we want that a hundred percent, Reverend Rodman. We want to, we want to make sure we work to get those other eighteen.
I still remember my-
Bring them up and get them where they need to be.
I still remember my economics teacher explaining why you could never have a hundred percent.
We want a hundred percent in this case so that our students can continue to move forward and, um, we can, I, just that, Mr. Rodman said, thank you all for your teamwork and effort, that we don't give up on our students, try to give them every effort to succeed.
May I just point out one additional piece, um, out of the eighteen students, nine did not attend the program. For whatever reasons, the parents opted them out. So those were nine students who did not get a chance to have an extra dose of intervention and those two additional opportunities to pass the assessments during the summer, but again, more than that is far.
Other questions?
But I just want to make a comment, it's something I asked, uh, that earlier today of Ellen and how this is dovetailing with the United Ways bold goal- and how this is dovetailing with the United Way's bold goal of third grade reading. And their goal is to have kids reading at level, you know, before that, it's sort of at the end of second grade, ready for third grade. So I'm excited to see, and, you know, Ellen did explain to me what we're doing and how that's already been kicked off in conjunction with United Way, and I'm excited to see how that helps us going into the future. And maybe we do get to 100% next year, based on what United Way is doing and helping and concentrating some funding our way on those, one of those big bullpools, I guess they call it.
And I think, again, another testament to the work that our staff does, that of the entire, that student population, 121 students, and we were able, as Reverend Walker, you know, that code, reduce it by, you know, down to 18. And then of those students, you know, I find that fascinating, that we weren't able to work with half of them, which of course goes back to the comment I made about the challenges that the kids bring. I mean, if we can't even get to them to provide the additional services, then, you know, anyway, thank you, thank you all. We need a roll call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes. Finance and capital money.
We have, in addition to, a complement to the report that our finance director, Mr. Pilmont, had made, the finance committee of the Akron Board of Education met on August the 21st with the following persons, President myself, Mr. James, and Ryan Pilmont. Considerable information was reviewed with highlights below. First was the consolidation of administration and OT buildings. And many of us had the opportunity on Saturday, some of us went to three buildings on Saturday, beginning at 7:30, I think, in the morning, and moving through the OT building, the, this building, and then going to a new site, a Main Street, to look at the possibilities of combining those two buildings into one building, and to see the positives to that, so that we will be able to be in one building, having all of our team together to do the work that we're talking about tonight. And then the next was Paladina Health. The finance committee reviewed Paladina Health delivery model, a more direct doctor-patient relationship, and how it could best serve the employees of the Akron Public Schools. And one of the things that is appealing, that the doctor would have so many patients, and it would cap at a certain number of patients, so that the time you would be able to spend with the physician would hopefully would be greater, wouldn't be just an in and out, you'd be able to spend time, ask questions. The other, as has already been noted, there is no co-pay. Persons would be able to see their physician in this new network in that fashion. Much information was examined, including financial review, return on investment, additional information regarding Paladina Health will be shared during new business. And again, as Mr. Otman had asked, we are emphasizing that, you know, one of the locations for our employees would be in Akron, physically placed here in Akron. The finance department is actively overseeing the management of $23,240,000, is that right? 778, 70 and 68 cents? Is that right? Okay, all right. Received thus far in federal, state, and local grants for fiscal year 2018. The dollar figure will continue to increase as the year progresses. In addition, the finance department is implementing new online shopping program for staff. This program will save the district money as it allows comparison shopping across multiple vendors, provides contracted pricing for most products, will reproduce or reduce reimbursement made to staff members, and will save time and effort throughout the district. Another exciting change in the finance department is a recent staffing change. Helen Fire has been with the district for over 30 years, many of those years spent as the budget supervisor. Todd Atkins has been with the district 15 years, past 13 years, as the account payable supervisor. As the finance department plans for future retirement, the decision has been made for the administrative team to learn new roles, beginning with Helen and Todd and their responsibilities. Making this change now allows a smooth transfer of knowledge within the department, so encouraging them to learn new tasks, so as we continue to grow and continue to get better at what we do, would allow some of our seasoned staff to learn new roles and responsibilities so they can easily move into those new positions as we move forward. Okay, so we're not just counting beans, there's a lot of work that is being done, and we look forward to particularly those two, the administration, buildings consolidation, and the great work that can be, you know, made possible through our new health partner, Paladina. And not to leave, all of the bargaining units, from my understanding, are in agreement with this, Paladina. This is not just administration or finance or superintendent saying this is something that you must do, this is something the bargaining units talked about, got information about, and agreed among themselves, this is something that they want to support.
And I would just add, it will not work without their support, because employees need the encouragement to use this program for its workforce.
Any questions for the finance?
I do have one question, and it's, I probably should ask it, Sarah, it seems minor, but it's not. You know, both of these buildings, this building here, Sylvester Small, and the OT building, both of them are, if I'm not mistaken, either close to or 100 years of age, and that's older, okay, older, ooh. So we-
OT's 117, I'm sure.
Well, I'm way behind on that, but that, that's a long time, and we do need another place for our employees, a nicer new place, because we're doing the schools the same. But this was a minor question. Mr. Ot, as well as Dr. Small, were both two good superintendents here in the Akron area. The names on the building, if we, if we combine the two buildings, we, make sure we think about that, because both of them were great superintendents, and if they weren't, I don't think the names would be on these buildings, so that's something we need to think about.
We talked about that just briefly, to make sure we didn't lose the history, plus we also brought, this was a location where the Wesley Temple Amity Church worshipped here for some time before they built their present facility. So there's a lot of secular and religious history in this particular building. Also, there's a wonderful, is it teddy bear collection? Mr. Ot, so there are a lot of things that share a lot of history that we're going to have to trigger what to do with, if we consolidate those two buildings into one, so that we can continue to keep those two names alive and well in the community, which they should.
I know in 1991, when me and Carl, Carl Masano, Assistant Service Director, used to come down there for meetings with Terry Greer, when we were working on utilizing resources, school, state resources, Carl took me out on the roof. I says, "Well, what the heck are we doing out here?" And he says, "I just wanted to show you what we used to play at recess." I says, "You're crazy, man, you know, there's no way." He said, "Yeah," he says, "this is where we did recess and everything, and they used to move classrooms out there, because the kids, I don't know, there was a theory about sunshine and TV and all this and that." A lot of history here.
Just real quick, as far as the history of the OT building, I do know, well, it's going to be a conflict, I guess, because I think it's Friday night at 5:30, at the OT building, there's an Akron to Akron walk for the history of that neighborhood, and I think that's in conjunction with the summit. So if anybody's interested in the history of not just that building, but that neighborhood, that's coming up this weekend. I'm trying to find the exact dates on it, but could get it fast.
Anything else for finance committee?
Oh, the other was, it was sort of whispered in my ear, with Paladina, is the board eligible to participate in this health program?
You don't have to announce anything about- It says that you can participate, you have to declare publicly. I believe.
Can or can't?
Can't.
Can't?
C-A-N.
Turn my mirror, turn my mirror.
Yeah, but you don't have to pay the-
You're technically employed of the board, so we cover the cost of subscription for all our employees. But we'll have to revisit what Mr. Bravo said about making sure that we pass the appropriate resolution. We have some time.
Anything else for finance? Instructional policies?
Believe it or not, we don't have a report tonight, but watch out in September.
I think they've already scheduled two extra meetings.
I think we have, so.
Let the record reflect, there was no report. All right, as Mr. Miller already mentioned, we did a resolution this weekend, and Mr. Nor was kind enough to go out and kind of read it, to kick off the Kenmore Garfield football game. And so section one just says that our most sincere appreciation is extended to Coach Kent Boyd, Principal Frank Colain, and all students and community members who have dedicated themselves to the smooth transition and ultimate success of Kenmore Garfield High School, and that this resolution be made part of the permanent record. In order to do that, we need a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion on this resolution?
I just want to say, I thought that was one of the most well-written resolutions in my heart, I just, I was all smiles, just when I finished reading it, so it was just one of those, I, it was well-deserved and well-thought-out, but, so whoever wrote it, thank you, I thought they did it.
That was Mr. Williamson, who, I sent him a text with emojis for like a fire truck and sirens, and "fire drill, fire drill, we need a resolution or proclamation for tomorrow." And he put, so, on the fly, too, very nice. I think that's me. All right.
We did a- We did a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
And I contacted each of you regarding, in addition to today's agenda item, which is, or agenda, which is the resolution in support of the city's earned income tax, this is a quarter percent increase that the city is seeking, one-third of which will go to support police, or police, one-third for fire and paramedics, and one-third for street maintenance. The last time that the city asked for an income tax increase that did not support the schools was 36 years ago. They have asked for our support via a resolution as they go out and work to convince the voters that this is a good investment for the city, and I believe it is, my own editorial. So we have a resolution for support of city income tax proposal, do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the resolution. Any questions or discussion on this item?
Yeah, I'd be voting yes on this, because I think Danny, Mayor, Mayor Oregon, deserves an opportunity to work, have some capital to work with to try to improve the situation in Akron, and great jobs. It's hard to swallow for a lot of people, because you look back 15 years, I think their household income was $42,000, now it's $34,000. You know, that's about the most incredible numbers I've ever read, you know, 15 years, 16 years, and it goes down 25%. But I think Mayor Oregon will manage it well, and I'd be voting yes.
I'd just like to follow up on that, because I agree with Mr. Otman, and also, all you have to do is take a look at what cuts the state, to what is given to local governments to understand why they've made this necessary. You can't continue to make those cuts and have it not show up somewhere, and it's shown up on a local level, and, you know, if there's one thing that we can sympathize with as a board, is having those cuts made at the state level where we have no control over that, in order to give tax refunds and have a very, very, very large rainy day fund.
I'm in supportive of it. Again, through our partnership, we have the opportunity to receive funds, we're still receiving funds, in our $800 million Imagine Akron Building Program. And we know it's a great sacrifice, but again, those services are needed now to protect and serve, to provide for our community, so we need to support one another in this endeavor.
I'll just say, I mean, if anybody has problems with the fire department or the police department, just take a short conversation here and see how they're struggling, and how it's split in thirds, you know, the last third, all you have to do is drive here, or drive anywhere in Akron, and see there's a need for something to be done with our roads. I mean, they're deteriorating, it's time, past time for a lot of them.
It's funny, Mr. Miller said that, because someone approached me today, thinking I was a city council person, I told them, "No, I'm on the school board," but they talked about, "We need to get the streets repaired and so forth." And I said, "Yeah, we do, but we also have to think about police and fire, which is number one, because you got to have the police to serve and protect, and you got to have fire in case there's fire, to help save lives," so that's important, very, very important.
With that street thing, there's an underlying story there, though. Engineering Department puts together a list of the streets that should be done, and if a councilman catches too much heck, because he thinks he's going to lose five votes, he doesn't have the guts to stand up and say, "Hey, it needs to be done and it's going to get done," you know, say, "Well, I want that pulled off the list," and he has that right and authority to do that. And sometimes a councilman that doesn't have the guts to just say, "Hey, it's time, man, you know, you can't drive down this road no more, we're going to do it, whether you want it or not, it's getting done." Because I remember being as a kid, going off my dad, and my dad talking, people screaming at him, and he'd just wave his hand, and he'd say, "Well, it's got to be done." You know, "You got a crater out there, four, about five foot deep, and you don't think this road needs to be done?" So it's, yeah, I mean, it's, our engineering, if engineering Department does a good job, it's sometimes, oh, some councilmen don't have the guts to stand up to the pressure, but most do, most do.
All right, Ms. Walsh, your turn.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion before you vote? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Otman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
All right, although we will not be discussing publicly our next item, we did discuss it in executive session. You also had the opportunity to review the resolution that we will be voting on, so at this time, I'm just going to ask for a motion on the resolution to reprimand Board of Education member John R. Otman.
So, over.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the resolution. Roll call, please. Are there any questions or discussions?
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otman?
No.
All right. We do have need this evening to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1, to consider the investigation or charges or complaints against-